Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 2nd County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And Carol is here in the front row if you need help with listening devices. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion is second, any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the minutes from July 28th, 2016. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion. Is there any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $921,556.06. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second. A motion is second. Comments? Commissioner Burr.
Madam Chair, today's bills include $250,000 to armor correctional, $150,000 to concrete materials for paving crews, $74,000 to the Brandon and Hartford Fire Department split between them, and then there was $183,000 E-911 transfer.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is Minnehaha County Highway Report for July 2016 is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Approve.
Second. A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is consider a motion to approve the 2016 Minnehaha County Affirmative Action Plan. Jen?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jen Otts from Human Resources. Last week I gave you a briefing on the 2016 affirmative action plan and you have a copy of the full document available to you as well. Today I just like to ask for a formal approval of that plan or answer any questions that you may still have.
Make a motion to approve the affirmative action plan?
Second.
A motion is second. Are there any questions for Jen? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number C is recognize significant employee anniversaries for August 2016.
We have four anniversaries this month. With 15 years of service, Ethan Pallack, who is a correctional officer in the jail; 20 years of service, we have Rich Lees, who is a property tax administrator in the auditor's office; also Bonnie Castain, who is a senior deputy state's attorney in the state's attorney's office; and 30 years of service, we have Jill Weber. She's a legal office assistant in the state's attorney's office. We just like to recognize these anniversaries and thank these employees for their longevity with the county. I see Rich is with us here today. I don't know if he wanted to say anything, Rich?
We're glad you're here. Item D is recognize significant volunteers in the county government for July 16.
For the month of July, we had over 280 volunteers. They volunteered their time in a number of different departments. With the jail, the Sulan Heritage Museums, the Juvenile Detention Center, Emergency Management, Safe Home, Sheriff's Office, Public Advocates Office, Public Defender's Office, and Equalization. So, a big thanks to all of our volunteers. They help us out in a number of different departments. We're very grateful that people are willing to donate their time.
Okay. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for abatements. Diane. And I'll just let you go through those and we'll do them one at a time. Is that what you want to do?
Good morning, Diane Reddick, Equalization Office. I have three assessment freezes from the Treasures Office. The first one is ID 20938 for $1,701.92.
I think you can read them all. I think we can do them together.
Okay. The second one is ID 21006 for $1,142.39. And the third one is 20028 for $1,047.55.
Are there any questions on those? Your motion. Commissioner Burr?
Are these all property tax freezes for elderly?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve them. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item, thank you Diane. Item number seven was notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next is opportunity for public comment. If anyone wants to speak about anything that is not on the agenda, we would ask that you give your name and your address and limit yourself to about five minutes. So, who would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. Scott Wick, Swimfire Fair Association. Again, just want to, it's that time of year again. Rides are rolling in. On behalf of the board and staff, I want to say thank you for your support. In the office are some passes and some vehicle passes along with a schedule for all the events. Commissioner Kelly, the rodeo is last weekend. I know you took in your first rodeo last year, so it will be the last weekend again. We have sponsors for $10,000 added money, which will bring in a lot more cowboys and probably some people that have been to the finals. So, it will be a good show. So, again, thank you for everything. The weather's looking pretty good. There's two days where they're forecasting some rain. As we know, that can change by the hour. But, we're going to have about three, four new rides, about 43 rides, a lot of different things. You'll notice some fairly substantial improvements. We had a gentleman that was camping for the summer and he specialized in refurbishing really rusty metal roofs on barns. So, all that rusty streaking on those barns has been painted. Painted a shop building that was all rusty as well. Looks very good. Maybe not so much up close, but from the interstate, it looks pretty darn nice. So, it's a vast improvement. And then we also had some 12 more feet of asphalt in about 400 linear feet going west to the grandstand, which will give people another 12 feet in front of the food booths as the crowds have been very large after some of the concerts. Some other improvements we were able to make due to the pipeliners being there for the summer. We installed an 8-inch PVC chase and some smaller ones that takes the power from the back fence all the way underground up to the front of house, or what we call monitor world. So, during a concert, the cables won't be above ground anymore. No more tripping hazards, no more cable covers, and bike racking for that. So, we're looking forward to a great show and invite everybody to come on out and see it. We open up Friday is the sneak peek. That's free admission. And then it's the premiere weekend. Monday is free admission for Billion Automotive Day and that's free and also dollar rides for the carnival. And then Tuesday is Senior Citizen Day, Wednesday Ag Appreciation Day, Thursday is the South Dakota Soybean Research and Promotional Council Day, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday are Ag Appreciation Weekend with South Dakota Corn. So, we hope you guys can make it. Glad to answer any questions, if there's any. Jeff, you have one or two usually. Beer Garden's open.
Can, is Dick too old to be in the rodeo?
Yes. He qualifies for senior men's breakaway roping. I can supply a horse.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
All right. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Terry LaPlure and I'm a resident of Sioux Falls. I come here today and have an issue with the IBC program over at the Detox Center. On July 6th, our son came to his mother and I and expressed the willingness to harm himself. He also made certain other statements of his intent to do the same. And we immediately got ahold of the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department and the Sioux Falls PD. And they issued a citywide BOLA and also a nationwide APB for his car and for himself. The next morning, I went down to the courthouse and I personally filled out the IBC application and it was signed by the court. I met with the attorney who was appointed to the case. He immediately started to draft the documents to get the medical emergency commitment done. About 24 hours later, our son was picked up by the Sioux Falls PD and he was taken to the Detox Center. The IBC that we filled out, which I have a copy with me today, was very poignant, ladies and gentlemen. It was asking for him to be confined against his will. That's the purpose of the IBC. It's involuntary. We were told by both the Sioux Falls PD and the Sheriff's Department that once the IBC was in place, the decision was out of our son's hands. I was the petitioner. I asked that he be evaluated and tested to see exactly what he was actually taking. He was taken down there. He was interviewed by what they described us to be a subordinate. We don't know who the person was, but it was late at night. They made him blow a breathalyzer and they asked him if he would be willing to comply. And he said no. And they simply said, "You can go." 24 hours later, he was arrested trying to buy drugs. What I want to try to establish here is to work with the commission to try to stop what has happened in our case from happening again to others. We petitioned. That's what we were told to do. We tried to seek help. We did it by the numbers. And now we're facing what we're facing with this situation. My son never had a juvenile record. He never had a criminal record as an adult until the 9th of July. Now he's looking at one felony and two misdemeanor counts out of Minnehaha County. He is currently being extradited back here as we speak. He's in Dodd City, Kansas, in the Ford County Jail. What can be done? I mean, I have suggestions that might help, perhaps in melding the two documents together, the IBC along with the medical commitment. Therefore, having the judge sign it, that would give the Detox Center legal right to hold that person for a longer period of time. I understand they can be held up to five days once that medical commitment is signed by the court. But there are certain criteria that has to be met, such as they have to do an intake, they have to do an evaluation, and then a report has to be submitted. That's good and fine, but if you let the horse out of the barn before you, you know, and then close the door, it's a little too late. In my son's case, we have reason to believe that he was actually kidnapped and taken out of Sioux Falls or out of the state of South Dakota by a methamphetamine dealer. And they did some horrific things to our son. My son lost 85 pounds since the 10th of July. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm not being facetious in any way, shape, or form, but on the evening of the 20th of July, we were led to believe that our son was murdered by these people. They actually staged a false homicide for our benefit. And Mr. Katmeyer, I understand you're going to be a new father in October. Congratulations. But it's going to be the most momentous occasion in your life, trust me. I was there when all four of my children were born. Never stopped loving them. I'm not trying to play the blame game here. I'm just trying to say that this could have been prevented just simply keeping my son there. He obviously needed help. He wouldn't have been arrested 24 hours later, actually 12 hours later. There was a genuine issue here and it just, he slipped through the crack. And that's what I want to try to do. I'll offer any assistance I can to any person on this commission or anybody that's involved with this system. We need to stop this. This could have been prevented just simply by holding him there, giving my attorney the opportunity to file that emergency medical document. Perhaps melding the two together and then worrying about the evaluation and the report should, I believe should take second fiddle to this. More important issue is when someone asks for help for someone else who has an addiction of any kind, whether it's, where they're threatening to commit suicide, or they're doing alcohol, or doing drugs, or whatever the case may be. It's a genuine concern. I wouldn't, I don't take that lightly. I mean, I've seen what my son was doing in the last two months, the spiraling and the road to destruction. I mean, he told his mother and I that he didn't care about anything or anybody, and if he had a gun, he would put it to his head and pull the trigger. You've got to be pretty desperate to be like that. He didn't, his self-esteem was nonexistent. He didn't think he had any worth to anybody. But, we tried to help and we reached out for that help and we did exactly what we were told to do. So, I'm asking this commission to try to find a way. If we don't change the way things are done, that's fine, but what we do need to change is that when someone petitions to have someone involuntarily committed, they should hold on to that person until an evaluation is done and the appropriate testing is done to determine exactly what their needs are. And then develop an IMP to pursue those results. That's what I'm asking the commission to do. I mean, I understand that you have subrogation rights against both the patient and/or the petitioner. In that case, it's myself and my wife. I have no problem with that. What I want to do is get my son help. Now, it may be a little bit too late because now he's in the criminal justice system, but I've told my son, when he gets back here, you stand tall and you own this. You made the mistake. You went there and you solicited those drugs. That was his mistake. And I asked him to stand tall and own it. And that's what I'm asking this commission to do, is to stand tall and own this. We need to get these people help. We can't allow, like my son, to slip through the cracks anymore. So, I beg you, help me to help people like my son. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. LaPlure. Mr. Kelly, Commissioner.
Where was he taken and where was he released from?
Well, we thought it was a separate facility, but it turns out it was at the county jail or county jail here, right next to the police station.
Okay.
It was late at night. Again, they said that it was a subordinate that was on duty. Apparently, he made a phone call to one of the counselors or, I don't know if a doctor seen him, a counselor seen him. All I know is that they said it was subordinate. And interestingly, my attorney, Mr. Eric Harding, he told me he talked to the administrator over there the next day.
Over where now? Over where?
At the Detox Center. Minnehaha County Detox Center. And he was told that when the police officers picked up my son and brought him there, that they asked him, the officers, "Why are you bringing this man here?" And they said, they allegedly said, "We don't know." Now, I talked to the Sioux Falls PD Detective Chef and he says, "I know that not to be true because I faxed a copy of the IBC to the officers before they picked your son up." So, that tells me that they had the IBC in hand when they went to the Detox Center. Why they would be telling my attorney that they didn't know why he was being brought there, I mean, what other reason would they have to pick him up? He hadn't committed any crime at that point in time. And I even understand that threatening to commit suicide is no longer a crime in this state. So, he didn't commit a crime of any kind. So, why did they pick him up? They just randomly go out and snatch people off the street, take them to detox? They had an IBC here. And it was worded very pointedly. This person threatened to commit suicide. This person was known to abuse alcohol and drugs. We thought it was methamphetamine, but it turns out it perhaps is not. But nevertheless, he bought two ounces or less of marijuana from this drug dealer on the street. And he and the drug dealer both got arrested at the same time. When my son was taken down to jail and booked in, they charged him with possession of two ounces of marijuana or less and possession of drug paraphernalia, a scale and a pipe. My son overheard the drug dealer tell the police at the time of the arrest that the scale and the methamphetamine were his, not my son's. My son was there to buy marijuana. And he did have the pipe. But when they booked him in and charged him, they charged him with two counts, two misdemeanors, the possession of the marijuana and the paraphernalia. They released him on a PR bond. So, again, we had him and we let him go again. On Monday, the 11th, that's when they modified the charge and they brought a complaint that was filed in Minnehaha County Court in the Criminal Division. And they charged both the individuals, the drug dealer and my son, with five counts. Three of them applied to my son. All five applied to the drug dealer. And the ones that were applied to my son were possession of methamphetamine, which is a class, I believe it's a class five felony. And the other two with the paraphernalia, the scale and the pipe, which were both misdemeanors. But my son was taken out of the state of South Dakota before we even knew about, before he even knew about the felony charge, because there was no felony charges filed against him. It's obvious if he had have been charged with possession of methamphetamine, he wouldn't have been allowed to bail out on Saturday night. He would have been held over till Monday. So, he was released on a PR. This person got him, took him out of state against his will. And we have reason to believe this because there was a phone call that he made to a friend at about 4:23 in the morning trying to reach out for help. And they discovered him making the call and the person who answered the phone said she heard loud screaming and yelling and wrestling around. And when my son first made contact with us with the Cedar County Jail in Wichita, we asked him about that event and he said, "That's when they discovered me trying to make a phone call and they took my phone away." They took his car keys, they took his wallet, they took his driver's license, his debit card. They took money out of his checking account using the debit card. The person that abducted him drove all the way from Sioux Falls to Wichita herself using my son's debit card to fund the entire trip, including checking in to the English Villa Inn in Wichita. We were tracking my son's-
Terry, I'm liaison to Detox, but Carol, do you think you and I and Terry could meet briefly after the meeting and kind of go through some of the details of what happened at least up here?
I realize. I'm sorry, I'm getting off message and I apologize.
That's okay.
My message here today is we need to do something to prevent this from happening again.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of find out what happened on this slipping through the cracks.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Do we have any other liaison reports? Excuse me. Yeah, sorry, I just got confused here. Comments, public comments?
Bruce Danielson, Sioux Falls. I'm just going to say, be brief up here. I just wanted to thank the County Commission and the workers of the County Admin Building for being so gracious to us as we're trying to collect petition signatures for our Stop the Funding Challenge that we're going through right now down at the west door of the County Admin Building. And to let you know that this is going to be a very short petition drive. And what we're doing is we're just trying to get a ballot measure on the, either general election ballot or in a special election that's going to have to be set up before October 1st in order to stop the bonding for an office building they want to put on the north side of the Romantics Building over here. And we really want the county and the city and also Lincoln County to be able to work together and to coordinate services, have a place where maybe even the building and planning departments can be in the same location because there's so many joint things that are happening and so many multiple tasks that could be accomplished if we had some kind of a facility that actually was jointly designed by the three entities and maybe the state, as the recent letters to the city council members had. So, I just wanted to say thank you for letting us work down there at the door. And if you have any questions, we'll be down there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. We have one more.
Good morning. Teresa Staley. I'm on the city council and I'm here to talk with you about a request that I have. But before I do that, let me say to you, I've been down here several times in the last several years. I want to say that I deeply appreciate the caring, listening attitude I see here. Every time I've come into this room with the County Commission, I have felt appreciated. There's a warm attitude here. So, I just want to tell you, thanks. That comes from your hearts. That comes from who you are. So, that's what we really desire in city government. So, thank you for that. I'm here, I've had a discussion with Bob Litz about this, but I'm here to ask for your consideration for a possible place on the ballot in the general election for an ordinance that I may be bringing up concerning the administration building. And Bob and I were talking and I have visited with the Lincoln County Auditor as well, but there's statute 12-2-6 that says that we, if there's an issue that comes up, it's subject to approval by the governing bodies. And so, that would be you. And this may or may not happen, but I wanted to set the groundwork in case it does so that we could have this with the November election. And it would save the city a lot of money if this happened. Apparently, Bob said that the last council election that I ran in was about $100,000. And he said that if we were to tag on to this, it could be under $10,000. I know you're not, we're not setting that in stone, Bob. But anyway, it would be a win-win for us if this would play out. So, I'm getting, kind of trying to get ahead of the game here. Bob, would you like to say a few words about this? If you have a-
I think we can have council look at it and just see where we're at. There's nothing we can make a decision today anyway, so-
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa, for the heads up. Any other public comments at this time?
Madam Chair, I just would say that here we have a city council person and there's Gerald and there's Dick and there's Bob and there's Dean. There are more, as many county, city council people here as there are county commissioners.
Past, past city council people.
Going with that.
Okay. With that, we will go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing and quality assurance review of the Minnehaha County Rural Ambulance Services by Minnehaha County Quality Assurance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Dr. Jeff Loether, the Quality Assurance Director for the county round surface ambulances. Thank you for letting me come this morning and present this report. It's been a while. Since the last report, there's been some changes and I know we've had some new commission, but I wanted to kind of just briefly go through some terms that I'll talk about in this report. You'll hear me refer to ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, and BLS, which is Basic Life Support. The difference is that the Advanced Life Support, which is a paramedic level, they engage in prehospital care provision that includes interventions such as IV starting, drugs, administrations, advanced area management, and there's other interventions that they can do based on their, if needed, call to the hospital and talk directly with medical control. We've had some changes. And Lynda Young sent out a historical itinerary of what's happened dating way back. But I've been involved in this for a long time, back when they established the ordinance. One of the principles, starting this ordinance, that was kind of promulgated by the late Gary Colwell, was to come and address problems with response times and retention and recruitment of the basic life support level care ambulance providers, which was at that time all volunteer. And so, part of the process developed this ordinance to perhaps engage in some funding for these primary service areas. We established boundaries, issued license per the ordinance for each one of these primary service areas. Through that process, I made recommendations to at least assist with some of the initial triage and care, was to implement a program with the Sheriff's Department to train road deputies to be EMT basics. And they could be our eyes and ears. And I submitted that the rubber's on the road and they could actually respond quicker and establish triage and establish whether a helicopter needs to be dispatched or render care besides all of the other scene safety things that they could do. They could be out on the interstate near Brandon and could get to Hartford quicker than what Humboldt could respond to Hartford with their ambulance. That being said, we got that successfully implemented, which didn't help with some of those problems, but we still had issues with transport. So, through the funding process, these ambulance services were able to hire part-time paramedics. Well, part of the original task force development was to provide some manner of quality assurance. And I guess I was the lucky one that got picked. So, through that process, I would review calls that were submitted. And based on a series of what we thought were needed or priority, were all the trauma calls, cardiac arrest calls, pediatric emergencies, and at the time, if they needed to transport the patient to the hospital, lights and siren. Back then, we called that code three response to the- Back then, we called that code three response to the hospital or transport. So I would get the run reports from the ambulance services. And there was also a 25% random review of all calls. So they would submit 25% of their calls. And I would review those things. The performance indicators I have in my report, they have, at the basic life support level, consistently have met those standards. All the services have. The issue is when these advanced life support reports started coming in, I was not reviewing those because that was not part of the process. And I made recommendations that we need to change the ordinance in some fashion to reflect that. Well, as it goes, I still review those. If there is an issue or an untoward outcome, I assured the county commission that there were some measures in place that allow us to catch those, and that is at the destination. And there has been a few that I've reviewed. And that is at the hospital, if the ER physician or the emergency medicine department staff has issues, they can contact me. I'm in contact with the physicians, most of the medical directors I know in the primary service areas, and I would be able to call those and resolve the issue. Most of the time, at the basic life support level, it was something like documentation or some minor thing. But the bigger problems had to do with advanced life support. And I would send those back to the individual medical directors for resolve. Now, having said that, there was a new provider in the city of Sioux Falls that also had a primary service area. Rural Metro had a primary service area. This then went for bid, if you will, and another provider bid. And I reviewed those two applications only at the basic life support level. I wasn't in a position to measure the outcomes or the skills validation at the ALS level of those two competitors. And the county commission decided to give it to MedStar. The other change is that EMS was historically under the Department of Health. It went to the Department of Public Safety. And now it is back to the Department of Health where, quite frankly, I think that's where it needs to be. And we have, at the paramedic level, they're under the auspices of the South Dakota Board of Medical and Osteopathic Examiners. Your basic life support, EMT technician, is really not under any required medical control. If they're affiliated with an ambulance, then that ambulance should have, with our county ordinance, medical director as well. So that's a change. The other change is that the emergency medical dispatch has changed from the code dispatch system, meaning code one, code two, code three, code four. Historically meant, code one was non-emergent. Code two would be they would respond with lights and that could include police department or just the fire department. Code three was a more serious call where we had more responders based on the nature of the call. Code four, everybody went. And that's now been changed to priority dispatching, where P1 is an emergency, P2 is less of an emergency, but there are some different parameters in which we could still send police with P2 or fire department with the P2. And enters P3, P4, P5, all of which are less in urgent response. Now, so we had to, in this report, that's reflective in that too, where we changed providers and we went to the P1 calls and P2 calls. So what I did again in this report was I stayed with the BLS performance indicators, but what I did was I broke this down. Basically, my findings again were that all of the basic performance indicators, the BLS performance indicators, have been met. And those usually are the things I look at on the individual chart that comes to me of those that were reviewed. And there were some issues with getting some of those reports to me. And we got together and developed a system where eventually they would drop the reports off here and I would pick those up. Furthermore, one of the services allowed me access on a secure site to pull their runs, but I would have to do my own filtering, looking for the types of calls that are required to be reviewed per the ordinance. Again, so my first, on the first page of this, I have a summary, kind of basically stating what I had just said. I do list some of the performance indicators that I review. Going through this, again, I reviewed all of the basic life support measures that are for each primary service area. But then I further broke it down just for interest to show that each service has a large number of pure advanced life support calls. When I look at those, again, I review at the basic level because before you can apply your advanced life support skills, start IVs, intubate, shock a person or whatever, you have to go through that first 120 seconds of BLS, securing the airway, making sure the C spine is immobilized and trauma, bleeding is controlled, those sorts of things. But I also have no way of doing skills validation of the paramedics that are engaged in these primary service areas. If I see that there was an IV start in the left antecubital or in the left arm, two attempts made and it was unsuccessful at the ALS area, I would review that more intensely, looking for trends, finding out why they had difficulty with that. But I don't do that at this quality measure sets. It's at the BLS level. But I listed down there those that were, and most of these all now are ALS and BLS. But I broke down some of the BLS and ALS call types. The non-medical is things like there's no patient or the patient refused care, those sorts of things. I receive a monthly report that's very detailed and complex from Matt Thule from Dispatch Center. And he's volunteered graciously to help filter some of this stuff, but I don't want him to have to do that. So we, me, filter out these things that I think are important with respect to the county ordinance. Again, for informational purposes, I listed the types of calls that we see that are, include the EMD Code Response System and the new priority system, so you can look through theirs, through those. If you see P1, you know that's under the new code, and that is a priority dispatch and emergency. Prior to that, that would have been a C4 or C3. So there's an inverse numbering system. Only important is that that's been a big change and has added some layers to the attempt at reporting all of this. And then I also broke down the types of calls that we do have to review. And you can go through each one of these from January of 2015 to current. The percentage of the calls that I reviewed were under that nature, whether it be cardiac, other medical, trauma, other medical includes our pediatric patients. And I also, again, broke down the code three, code four. And then you can see about April, May, June and there of 2015 is when we made our shift to the priority dispatching. Again, all of those calls, excuse me, that I reviewed at the basic life support performance indicators were all met, about 95%. A couple of times, I had to call the services and make sure that the call was for shortens of breath and I saw you didn't use any oxygen or there was a trauma and there's no documentation where they immobilized the spine. And to find out that it was all mostly just documentation and there was no untoward outcome. Again, so the county knows that what I do is I have that endpoint, final safety measure, and that's the destination. So if somebody really does something that's so aberrant, I'll be able to find that at the destination at some point. Because I do review ALS for the city through REMZA. The last page is kind of what I did when I vet out your applications for these services when they come through, which I think is important, process to make sure that they're compliant, that all of their staff is licensed appropriately. I just found out that the Department of Health will be issuing cards to the EMT basics now, and that'll help us do primary validation of their certification. Prior to that, there's really no way of getting it. The person would pass the examination, which is a national registry, and they were issued some affirmation that they were, but there's no way really to track that. So now, with it being back in the Department of Health, we're hopeful that we'll be able to track those individuals and do some manner of primary verification of their certification. So now, this brings me to what do we do moving forward? I know there is some discussion about changing primary service areas. Maybe this is a time that, you know, quality assurance, how do you value that? Maybe you don't want this quality assurance at the basic level. Whatever your decision, I'll work with you. I do some things off-grid per my contract. I assist the sheriff's department. I help develop and dispense and promulgate their Narcan under the attorney general's direction. They wanted, Narcan is an antidote for heroin, if you will. It's becoming a huge process that's involving not only law enforcement and first responders, but also lay folks. In Ohio, family members can go and get Narcan. And it's just a spray, it's a nasal mist. It can't hurt anyone. It'll only help particularly if there's an overdose. And there's reports of this saving lives in communities because of the rampant explosion of opiate abuse across the country. Some of the other things I do is I do review protocols for the road deputies to make sure that they're current. And I've done some other things, host of things that, on demand, if they need some help. Now, since we have ALS in our system, the state does, and I submitted that for, I don't know if it come in the report or not, Carol, but it's, now, this comes from the Department of Public Safety. I'm assuming it'll be applicable to the Department of Health, but it has to do with development of quality assurance program for advanced life support providers. The requirements of this, which is, and I don't know how you read these, is at thirty-four dash eleven dash eleven. It states that reviews, reports, any ambulance service that provides advanced life support shall conduct a quality assurance program. The quality assurance program shall include, at a minimum, a review of the appropriate use of oxygen therapy, the appropriate use of intravenous therapy, medication administration, and the appropriate use of cardiac monitors. The Department of Public Safety shall develop a quality assurance program that meets the requirements of this section. The ambulance service may use the program developed by the Department of the ambulance service, or the ambulance service may develop its own quality assurance program. The ambulance service shall compile the quality assurance reviews into an annual report, which shall be kept on file for at least three years and made available to the public of, to the Department of Public Safety upon request. We may be able to use that, which would require those services to submit their ALS quality review, advanced life support review. And with that, the county commission can add that as a requirement for ordinance or for licensure as a requirement than that that's coming up. So there are some mechanisms in place that you could take advantage of. So with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Dr. Luther, you have the emergency medical director responsibility for the county. How does that differ from the individual physicians who are in each of these five regions?
That's a good question. When we developed that ordinance, we made that requirement that they, each service provides its own. My scope was intended to be an external independent review of those calls, which was fine until now we're into the ALS service now, most of the time, if not half the time for these ambulance services. So that becomes much more important. They should, the medical director at the ALS level should validate skill sets, which I don't do. They should be able to review interventions, whether it be medication, route, dosage, concentration. They should review the appropriate use of cardiac monitoring, make sure that it's timely, review CPR or any kind of intervention in cardiac arrest calls, trauma. And they need to meet and then perform that similar to what I do at the ALS level in the REMZA scope. So basically, what I do or have done is just provide that external independent review for those services. I communicate with them on occasion, particularly if I see an issue. And I make that call and we come to resolve on that. But some of that is due to the state requirements that if you're an ambulance service providing, even at the BLS level, that you have to have a medical director. So we just infused that. What and how much they engage in these different services, I don't know.
Additional questions, Commissioner Penner?
So Dr. Luther, kind of to tag on to that, to make sure that I'm trying to track all of the information you're providing, which I appreciate. This statute thirty-four eleven eleven that you mentioned, is that changing the game then a little bit? Is it something that you were suggesting that we could use if we amended our ordinance to replace some of the things that you are doing for us currently?
Correct. I think that that's a good option for you. Now, since EMS is under the auspices of the Department of Health, I'm assuming that this statute transfer over, this I don't know. But I think it's a good pin, if you will, that you could use if you do amend the ordinance or as part of the licensure vetting process, that this is included in that.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner Bar?
Doctor, I'm probably the one that has most questioned our work with you on this. And, you know, you pointed out correctly that we contract you for BLS. And I really appreciate your work with the sheriff's department. That's an important function, which maybe we should contract separately. But so you've, on your own volition, gone over to look at the ALS stuff? Is that what you're telling us?
Another good question. I don't want to turn a blind's eye on the ALS portion of that, but I really don't have a way of making sure that the medication that they used was appropriate for that condition. That's why I rely on the destination if there's an untoward outcome. Then I would bring that immediately back to their provider. Those providers have to be on the license of that individual physician. And so what I do is, again, I assure you I would not turn a blind's eye on it. But there are some things that I would, if I were providing ALS direction, would want to trend. And that is they tried two attempts to get an IV, couldn't do that, they're unsuccessful. I do look at if there was an airway attempt and it was unsuccessful. I would follow that up, even at the ALS level. So I would do that myself.
If I may, you know, it seems like we've gone these many years without any issues coming forward that you've discovered. It's hard for me to believe that these ambulances have all been running perfectly. On the other hand, if they have been, you know, on another medical level, we no longer vaccinate for smallpox because there's no longer a problem with smallpox. So why would we vaccinate with smallpox? And why would we want to keep checking things that don't have any issue?
That's a very good question. I mean, what do we do with quality? Quality, you don't think about it until you find the mouse in the Pepsi bottle and then you have issue. Is there complacency? No. I think when I've reviewed all of these, everybody's been up to standards. Again, I don't inspect the ambulances because the state requires just a basic minimum for basic life support. If I inspected the ambulances that are now out there in all primary service areas, I would have to check for all their medications, make sure they've got lock boxes, look for expiration dates, make sure that all of their equipment is functioning at that ALS level, which to me is incumbent upon their individual medical director. If you wanted to amend that and you still want me to do something like that, I'd be more than happy to do that, but that takes a lot more time. Particular skills validation. ALS has really, really changed. I mean, our prehospital care provision is really just short of what we do in the emergent department. I mean, we're able to stabilize patients and bring them to the destination in an already improved condition. Can we do that with BLS? We can. Can we screw up at the BLS level? Yes, we can. So it brings it, it begs the question, what is quality worth and what is it that we should do for quality and at least make sure that quality standards are being met? You could relegate that, I suppose, to someone else that would review- You could relegate that, I suppose, to someone else that would review to make sure that they're within, and then take it to a higher level when there is an issue? I guess that's kind of a question up to you all. I've been doing this since, I think, I don't know, it seems like forever. But I have, on occasion, found some, some serious things. We're doing chest compressions on a person with a pulse, but that was brought to the attention and brought to resolve after some discussion. And if the individual medical director or the ambulance director wanted to do remediation or medial training, I offered to do that as well, way back in the beginning. Tried to get out and have annual EMS symposiums, and we did. And the turnout was light, because at the time, these volunteers, they've got jobs and other obligations, so it was kind of difficult getting us all together at the same time to go through training.
Commissioner Benner.
Do you get any feedback, Dr. Luther, from the ERs, or does that go to the indirect medical physician in those regions?
Very good question. No, that comes to me. I think it's just, I've been standing on a corner so long, they know, they sometimes don't know who all the other medical directors are, that indirect call, indirect medical director, so I get that. And I meet with these guys once a month, and if there is an issue, I will hear about it. If it's a significant issue, they're going to call me personally. All three critical care access hospitals. And I'm assuming the new freestanding ER will as well.
Commissioner Kelly.
The ALS calls, are they increasing? And is it dependent on who they've got for staffing? I noticed that Humboldt's about a third of their calls are ALS. Garrettson, a little less than a third. MedStar is very, very low, less than ten percent.
Well, if I should clarify-
Is it something we're going to have to have more and more attention to?
I think so, yes. And perhaps a solution may be requiring this quality assurance report as per, per this statute or law by the Department of Public Safety, which I'm assuming will be the same as under the Department of Health. Because, and of course, they have to develop their own, but the state has one if they want to use that. But if they develop their own, then I would say, here's, here's the performance indicators we want to look for. Because there's look-alike, sounds-alike medications, and, you know, once in a while, that can happen, and may not cause an untoward outcome, but you want to make sure that it's identified. And I don't know how often the medical directors meet with their individual services. I probably should know that. But it's, right now, it's more reactionary, how we're doing the QA. It's at the BLS level, if I find something, then I'm going to go after it. I'm assuming their continuing education is all done internally. Because when we vet the licensure, I go through and make sure, per our ordinance, that, you know, they got to be certified, have national registry, their ambulance has to be up to snuff per the state, they have to have insurance, and then they list their medical director. And all the while, each month, too, the ordinance requires these response times. So I work with Matt Thule to make sure that, once they're dispatched out, toned out, they have sixty seconds to acknowledge the call. They have ten minutes to respond. And in the past, we've had issues with that, too. And I got involved with the state's attorney, and we fired a shot over the bow a couple of times and got it corrected. But that led to some other changes as well, and that has included the sheriff's deputy becoming empty basic.
Commissioner. Doctor, you know, the city Department of Health and REMSAA pay you considerably more than we do, you know, I think four times as much. What do you do for them that you don't do for us?
Well, I'm involved in reviewing all of their validation, their skills validation. We also, I develop their protocols for them, for ALS.
Those flow over to us, too, though, right? The protocols for dispatch, et cetera?
Those are advanced life support techniques, Commissioner Bar. So currently, there is some advanced airway changes that we're going to submit to the medical board. I have to present all to the medical board, which is a crosscut of individuals from all the critical or access hospitals, includes ER physicians, trauma surgeons. So as we change our protocols to stay paced with best practice standards, they review it, and then they approve it, and then we take it back to REMSAA, and then it's official in terms of its administrative approval. But we have semi-annual skills validation where they do their own training, I monitor that. We get pig necks, and they do surgical airways on pig necks, and we've got mannequins and all sorts of simulators. PIT crew, which is a group of, it's all of the providers that would work on a cardiac arrest call, and so I'd monitor that. So, or the person at the left shoulder is doing this, the person on the right hip is doing that.
So are rural ambulances not doing that training? Do they not know these things?
Well, that's, what their training is, I don't know, Commissioner, what their program is. I know MedStar has a training program. And what the individual ambulance service does with their paramedics, because I don't even know who their paramedics are. In this, in the system, the ALS system for REMSAA, I know who all the paramedics are, excuse me, because I do a meet and greet and test them. If one has demonstrated on merit, the maturity, and looks like they're ready to advance to a senior status level where they start doing more procedures, I sit in and test those as well, with their individual medical director.
One more question, Commissioner. Doctor, one of the issues that's come up lately is the issue of mutual aid, and it appears that there's resistance between some of the providers to even allow mutual aid. What can we do to make sure that people aren't faced with waiting for an ambulance that's currently dropping someone off in Yankton to come and get them? You know, what can, what needs to be done to assure all of our citizens within the city and the county that mutual aid will show up?
Well, recently, that came up as an agreement. And a formal agreement, I don't quite understand. We have automatic response, so if, if, I don't want to name a service, but if we call that service and they don't answer within sixty seconds, they'll get another tone out. And if that, this is in the county, if that isn't responded, then there is an automatic dispatch of their sister primary service area. So that has always worked well. If we've got one ambulance up on the Jack's getting oil changed, and they're not able to respond, well, if we can, and they do, best they can, is to let dispatch know that, then the next service will be dispatched out. In the city, it's become a little bit more amalgamated because there is this notion of an agreement. And that's between the services. What REMSAA is requiring is that whoever that service is has performance indicators and quality measures, a QA, QI program. It doesn't have to match REMSAA's, but at least that it's, they're at their standards with the individual services. And so to actually sign on that, and then there's some, there's some mention about financial exchange, which, the way I understand it, is non-existent in the industry. But when you pull one service out for transport at the ALS level, I can see where that question can come up. But I think in the county, we're still, we're still fine with our mutual aid. We, when I vet out the ambulances, that is one of the requirements, do you have mutual aid? And then it's just listed. Del Rapids is mutual aid for Garrettson. Jasper is mutual aid for Garrettson, or Garrettson's mutual aid for Jasper, and so on. So I think it's, at the BLS level, and, well, now ALS level, I think we're, we're okay in the county. The city is another matter.
I have a comment from City Council that they would like to make regarding, Commissioner Kelly, I'd let you go first.
I'm trying to make some sense out of this chart with the BLS versus ALS. There's a lot of blanks in there. Is that where they failed to submit anything?
And where are we at?
For instance, it's the one that shows each ambulance service, and then the, each month for fifteen.
Page five or six, I believe.
One.
Looks like it's page six, maybe?
Page sixteen, Commissioner, one-six.
Six, I believe, that's how it shows up on my iPad, anyway.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, let's go to Del Rapids, which is just off the screen. You have nothing for the first six months.
Right. Well, for Del Rapids, that's when I started going through their electronic review. I just didn't have the paper review in here. I have that, and I, that's my fault. Likewise, with MedStar, they started somewhere about there in that primary service area, the new one. Before that, that would have fell under rural metro.
Okay, how about Humboldt? You got, you got three months there with nothing.
October, September, October.
Which, which one?
Humboldt.
Oh, oh, yes. Well, I'm missing reports.
They aren't getting them to you.
Well, they are now.
Okay, so the first six months of sixteen would be significantly different than this?
We had some issues. In fact, one service dropped off every run they did since January fifteen. After, and again, I'm, I'm not being critical, there's just, there's just an attrition through the volunteer ambulance service, and I was having difficulty. We got Lynn DeYoung involved after we had gotten together, and so the last bunch I just got, I had to filter on my own.
This has been an issue going on for a while, hasn't it?
It has, and-
Are they supposed to be timely? Are they supposed to be each month?
Well, yeah, and that was kind of the agreement, is that they would drop them off at my office, and I would get those, and then there'd be a lapse, I would call. Again, I don't want to be critical of the services, but it's just, that's a fact. And we stepped on our toes a little bit, and we got some resolution for a period of time, and then it, then it kind of slacked off again. And so that, if we see those gaps, everything that comes to me, I will report on. And if I don't have it, then I can't report on it.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
But I understood you to say that Del Rapids you had, you just didn't get it on there.
That's my fault. Yeah, Del Rapids has been good at that, and that's, that's my fault that's not in there. Jasper, they just didn't have any.
No calls, it all are no reports to you?
No calls.
Yeah, okay. So why wouldn't it just say zero, 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 all the way across?
Well, that's, you know, if you see me struggle trying to put these charts together in these columns and stuff, I have a difficulty doing that. So that, I mean, I'll take, accept responsibility for that.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, I'm not trying to blame, I'm just trying to understand.
And I know it is a bit confusing, but this is, you know, I basically longhand this out, and then I, what help I can, and I'll put it into one of these, and it's like, well, there's your chart, you set it up and you go through it. So it's off a tally that I did by hand, not, not all of that, because I don't, some of the other stuff, like in an Excel spreadsheet, I got some help breaking it down when we look at the percentage of the calls that are cardiac, or the percentage that are trauma or non-medical.
Commissioner Kelly has a question.
I'm, like, Garrettson showed a hundred and three BLS and forty-one ALS for the year, not including December. And yet, you go down to Del Rapids, and they didn't have the first six months, but they only show ten calls total.
Then that's, that's not accurate.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, no, that's not accurate.
Do you think it'd be possible for you to get this chart as accurate as you can, and then get it back to us so that we can figure out who?
Yeah, if I have the calls, if I, if I have the chart-
Well, then if you could just note that you didn't have the calls, then we would know for sure who's, why the information's missing, if it's missing on your end or missing on their end. That'd be helpful.
Because in the past, we've given them each a third, a third, a third of the hundred and fifty, I believe.
Right.
And, you know, if somebody's got thirty percent of the calls, and somebody's only got ten percent, I think we have to at least be able to consider that.
I can't make chicken salad out of turkey. I could make chicken salad with a chicken, but it's just going to take me time.
We just, yeah, we just need to know what you have and what you don't have, and that would be helpful to us.
Well, I don't think, yeah, I don't think you have to go back. I think if going forward now, this is more accurate, it would make more sense.
I think City Council, Teresa Staley has something to say about the ambulances.
As you may know, we just addressed the ambulance issue within the City Council and the city of Sioux Falls. And I just wanted to say something about MedStar, and that when we were talking to Paramedics Plus, their director got up and said, "We acknowledge we need to keep working to improve." And we're talking about quality, we're talking about education, being supportive, and I'm hoping you are not going to pull the plug on MedStar. We need, okay, because we, talking about mutual aid, we're talking about catastrophic disasters in our community, that, because we're talking about changing, maybe changing ambulance services. And I mean, I hope that we'll continue to support these, these outlying services so that when we do have a problem within the Sioux Falls community, we are going to have people that we can call upon, because one ambulance service isn't going to be able to do everything.
We're just looking at the report for this last year, that's a piece of quality assurance report, and that's all we're doing is reviewing the report, so. Any other questions for Dr. Luther?
Dr. Luther, have you prepared a report like this for the, for the commission before?
Yes.
And so once a year, do you usually come and do this?
Well, it's, it's on demand. I mean, this, this last year, there were some changes. I've been at the ready to bring in what I've got, so, you know, one quarter, we thought, might have been sufficient, and there's just a few runs to review. Looked at semi-annual, and that's up to the commission whenever they, they want. The reason that it's been a year and a half, that there's been some changes, I've been, you know, waiting to present, you know, we've had some changes in the administration, and, but along with that, there are other changes that are, that are pretty monumentous, too, including changes of one provider. Primary service area was vacated and then applied for by the new provider and another provider. We went through the EMD dispatching change, so there has been quite a few changes here recently, including but not limited to the trade-off of EMS going from the Department of Public Safety to the Department of Health, has impacted all of this. But I've always, whatever I've got, I'll, I'm prepared to present at any time. It doesn't take me long to put these reports together now. But again, I got to caution the commission that a lot of this ALS stuff is not under my purview. We can look at that if you wish, but, you know, that, that takes a lot more time, particularly medications, vehicle inspections, those sorts of things at the advanced life support level.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number eleven. We authorize the chair to sign the agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for railroad crossing improvements located approximately two hundred feet west, Highway one forty-three on Highway one eighteen. Shannon, good morning, Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. Similar to last week, I'm working on getting this working, Carol? I pushed the little magic button. All right, there you go. Well, I think you had the same thing on the show.
It was there and it's gone.
Carol, it went away. What you have on the, what you had on the laptop was better.
Do you want to use that one still?
Yes.
Yeah, this one's upside down.
There you go. Okay, starting over. April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, this board passed Resolution fourteen dash seventeen, which authorized the placement of the subject railroad crossing onto the DOT's Transportation Improvement Program, which then allowed the DOT to schedule this project for construction. On the monitor, you can see the location of this project is north of Lyons and slightly west on County Highway one eighteen, also two hundred and fifty-second Street. The item before you today is our request that you sign the contract with the DOT, which then allows construction to proceed, again, in two thousand and seventeen, under Project PP nine zero five zero, Agreement Number sixty-eight, Control Number zero five zero four. The workshop consists of installing crossing signals with gates and the removal of the existing timber crossing and replaced with concrete panels. The total width of the new project will be thirty-two feet wide. To summarize the length of agreement, which is also attached in your packets, the total cost of the improvement is estimated to be two hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-two cents, of which our cost participation is ten percent, or twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and twelve cents. The BNSF does the work, the state reimburses them for their materials and labors, of which they cover ninety percent. And then we use a small amount of our labor to kind of offset the cost of our cost participation, and then all those accounts are reconciled as actual construction dollars. So again, our request is that you sign and execute this agreement to replace this railroad crossing.
Make a motion to allow the chair to sign the contract.
Second.
Second additional questions? All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
And aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Shannon. Item number twelve is a public hearing to consider adoption of the following international building codes and amendments. And Kevin, we'll just let you go through each one of those.
All right, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. I have a PowerPoint coming up here. So today I bring before you the second hearing- So, uh, today I bring before you, uh, the second hearing for the international building codes that we are looking to adopt. Uh, the, these codes are, uh, we are allowed to adopt these by South Dakota Codified Law, Chapter eleven and ten, which gives us the local authority to adopt, amend, and modify or delete uh, from the International Building Code of two thousand and fifteen edition. Uh, the, these codes are also, uh, uh, are written by the International Code Council, which is a three-year update, so our current codes are from two thousand and twelve. Uh, and this is now the sixth edition of the, the publication of all three of these codes that we're looking to update. The County Planning Department has worked, uh, closely with Ron Bell from the city of Sioux Falls, uh, Building Services. He has provided with us with much materials and, uh, that we have looked at to review uh, how our code, um, meets with the city's code and how we can adopt what they're adopting. So it, when the city annexes portions of the county that the building code, uh, moves forward with that, so it works kind of seamlessly between the two. Uh, and then Todd Anowski from the, uh, Home Builders Association of Sioux Empire has been contacted regarding the code update, um, and I believe he might be here, he might, uh, he said he was going to be here. So, uh, he has approved of this update as well. Um, other things to cover, uh, last time, the first reading, it was brought up that with building code updates, uh, there's sometimes there are some increases in costs because of different materials. Uh, I found a, uh, research article that was, uh, prepared for the National Association of Home Builders that estimated for a single-family dwelling that there is a high to low range of improvement costs from two thousand eighty-eight dollars at the high end, and a low end of, uh, a negative, uh, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. So it really isn't a great cost. Uh, there were some costs listed in the report for, um, uh, things that are not standard in a house, uh, such as a deck and a few other things. A lot of them have to do with, um, say, floodplains or coastal things that really aren't standard. So there may be some additional costs and changes from there, uh, as far as the, the international residential code, and that's what this covers, the, the building code updates, but that was one of the concerns I brought up last time. Um, so I'll just cover here, just briefly, the three different codes that we're looking at updating. Uh, the IBC, which is the International Building Code, this is two thousand and fifteen edition. Uh, it applies to, uh, uh, all occupied buildings except for one and two-family dwellings and townhouses. Uh, so any building that is new, being constructed, mostly commercial buildings or, uh, ag, ag buildings would be covered under this as well. Then there's, we're looking at updating the IRC, the International Residential Code, and this is what covers the single-family dwellings, uh, and, uh, two-family dwellings as well. And all their accessory structures, garages, pergolas, that sort of thing. And then the International Existing Building Code, uh, which covers all those buildings as, uh, existing and updating. Uh, if you're going to say, put a new door in, or, uh, add additions, what does that mean to the rest of the building? Um, and how that goes about. So, uh, with us today, I, I do have our building inspector, um, our building inspector's with us as for any, uh, specific questions regarding the code. Um, other than that, I can help you as best as I can, and if you have any questions.
Commissioner Kelly.
Do you know, do they ever take things out of the code, uh, that are no longer relevant? Or does this thing just keep growing and growing and growing?
So as part of that, uh, that negative number there, uh, yes, that is part of the removing of things out of the code. I saw one change, uh, I'm just going off memory, that if you make a, do something to the basement where before you'd have to have an exit, now they say that you don't need an exit. So that would be a, a different change, that, yeah, they do remove things out of the code.
I think I saw another one, too, Kevin. That was a removal. That's not what I saw. So I think there, there were some removals when I ran through it yesterday.
That, that in the county and the city has worked to remove some of the high-cost items out of the ordinance, so that way it's more, um, doable for, uh, cost-wise, as far as, uh, if it's prohibitive.
Well, I guess that's been my concern, has been that we keep making affordable housing less affordable every year, every three years. And, and, um, I'm not sure those figures that the homeowners, the home builders tell us much, because if it's two thousand, that, you know, on, on, on a beginning of a home, that's about one, one and a half percent. We do that every year, and pretty soon you got these up to a hundred and twenty-five, forty thousand dollars.
Commissioner Bender?
So Kevin, can you just, I, I think you've already said this, so I apologize, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Um, you've worked with the city on this, and what you're, what is being proposed here is going to be identical to what the city has done.
It's going to be very close. Uh, the, the things that are different, um, are, uh, there are some additions where in the county, it doesn't, uh, because of distance between buildings or different distance between structures for like swimming pools, for examples, there are some differences with that. Uh, that if you're so far away, you can not have a fence. Uh, other differences would be just making sure that whatever it says, uh, like, the Minnehaw County Building Inspector, that sort of thing, would be our differences, our main differences.
But as far as actually constructing the structure, if you're constructing a structure inside the city of Sioux Falls, you would be looking to the same set of rules and guidelines as you would for out in the county.
Yep, and that makes it easier on the builder, too, that they know that they can flip-flop on either side of the boundary at the same code, so...
And is the Home Builders Association involved in, as you guys went through and reviewed all the suggested changes? Or did they just get a copy at the end and say that, okay, looks fine?
When we were working with the city, Ron Bell explained to me that they have gone through, uh, much of that process with homeowners association already. Uh, so we, in a sense, have left that up to the city of Sioux Falls to take care of that, that the year of review of the changes, or year or so, um, uh, that they did. And maybe perhaps Todd can talk to that, too, if he's here, so...
That'd be wonderful, thank you. I think Todd's offering to talk, maybe?
Yep. Additional questions for Kevin? Todd, do you have a comment for us? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Anowski, Government Affairs Director with the Home Builders Association. What Kevin said was accurate, and maybe to expound a little bit more on our home builders process, I'm going to invite up our two thousand and sixteen president, Jason Sikora, and he'll give you a little bit more overview of, as far as our process and work with the city.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Like Todd said, my name is Jason Sikora. I'm the two thousand and sixteen president of the Home Builders Association of the Sioux Empire. I'm also owner of Sikora Remodeling. On behalf of the Home Builders Association of the Sioux Empire, we support the two thousand and fifteen IRC provisions that are you guys are reviewing this morning. The ordinance before you is nearly identical to what has already been adopted and being followed by licensed contractors in the city of Sioux Falls who pull permits. Last year, during the building code review process with the city of Sioux Falls, the Home Builders Association and the members of its Building Codes Committee met over a six-month period to review changes associated with updating the existing two thousand and twelve international code to what is now the two thousand and fifteen IRC. Subsequently, the City Council adopted the code in December two thousand and fifteen, and it became effective for any contractor who's pulling permits, uh, after April thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen. Since that time, HBase has worked and continues to work with other jurisdictions when implementing new building code updates. Overall, HBase believes building codes and standards should assure the safety and health of building occupants using the most cost-effective requirements and guidelines. On behalf of the HBA, we encourage your support for this code update. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions?
Perfect. Thank you. I'm going back to work now.
And if I could, Madam Chair, just, uh, the question by Commissioner Kelly as far as the, the cost. I know Kevin shared a, a slide up there from our National Association, but we also talked about, uh, different local amendments being, uh, put into the ordinances. And in talking with Ron Bell, he, he thought this last code cycle with the amendments that we, uh, put forth, it resulted in a cost savings of a very conservative amount, ten thousand dollars. And so, again, you change out different parts of the code, and again, trying to keep housing affordable, housing affordable, uh, that is sort of one mechanism we have, because, again, as a, as a prop, this, this is the book. This is a two thousand and fifteen IRC. It gets, uh, vetted at the national level, and then it gets passed down. If you have a state building code, uh, it goes through that process. We in South Dakota, we don't necessarily have a, an actual formal state building code. So it goes down to the local level, and then also, uh, countywide, so, again, just, uh, little information there.
Todd, did I hear you say it costs savings? Uh, savings?
Yes, uh, different, uh, provisions were, have been amended from the national code. Uh, and again, those, those result in cost savings, and so, uh, again, different climates, we're, we're in a more northern climate than, say, a southern climate, and so, uh, like, different energy provisions. Sometimes it takes a little time for, uh, the cost of a new product to come down, and so if you can maybe amend out a provision for a three-year code cycle and, and come back again, the next code cycle, and look at it, maybe the price of that new product has come down because more builders across the country are, are buying that product. And so it's, it's sort of a, a delicate, uh, balance.
Well, I'm excited to hear that. If I may, Madam Chair, uh, you know, I share Commissioner Kelly's concern when a regulation comes down from on high. I remember, uh, reading that, uh, colonial regulations for the British Empire required roofs in Singapore to be at a forty-five-degree angle, so the snow would slide off. And, uh, clearly, this is, uh, bureaucratic overreach, but I'm, the idea that, uh, changes in, in regulation might actually save something, uh, this ought to be a headline someplace.
Just comment on that. Uh, that's ten thousand dollars in stuff that was in there that, that doesn't apply to us. It isn't a ten thousand dollar savings over what cost of building a house last year, and, uh, I still, you know, I still have my concerns.
Kevin?
Little comment, I recall from Gene Bender's question regarding differences. Uh, the county has portions of the ordinance that the state does inspections on, the city does not. So the state does electrical inspections, uh, the state has their, um, fire code, uh, and that sort of thing, that, that the city does have their own inspectors for, that we do not. So we put in the ordinance that the state does it, essentially, so...
Question, Kevin, are we just doing A, or does it encompass A, B, and three, C for your presentation?
So my presentation is for all three, uh, A, B, and C, which would be, uh, the forty-nine sixteen, or sixteen forty-eight, I believe, through, yeah, forty-eight sixteen through fifty sixteen, MC's fifty sixteen.
Okay, so, but this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to, um, these building code requirements or ordinance? Seeing none, I would ask the commission if there's a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second to approve. Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I'm not going to support this, and I'll tell you, I just want to say why. Because in twenty-one years, it's probably the seventh time I voted on these changes, and, or maybe not quite that many, but, I, I, I still think these things, you look at the size of that document. I mean, I tried to read what we've got in our, on our Dropbox, and my eyes started crossing about halfway through the deal. Somewhere, I think we need to look at, you know, are these, were these codes really, uh, they, they do things? Uh, I, I know on GFI and some of those things, you know, the cost between a GFI and others, uh, when my kids were remodeling a house, they, they found it was like four times for whatever they had to have, now that they didn't used to have. So I'm going to vote no, but it's, it's a symbolic vote, obviously, because I know where this is going to go. And I, I just hope someday that we'll look at this thing and say, maybe that book could be less. It's kind of like, uh, it's not quite as bad as, uh, health, the health plan, but, uh, that's what happens when big government or big associations do things, is it just continues to grow, and nobody looks at how to save.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Additional comments?
Someday, that whole book will be an app on your cellphone.
Still be three thousand pages long.
We have a motion of second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed.
No.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is liaison reports. Are there any additional liaison reports? Since I tried to have you do it earlier. Commissioner Bender?
I just would like to do a quick report. The, um, we had the first meeting of the ad hoc committee last Thursday night uh, to kind of look at all the information we've gathered so far about, um, post-jail. All of the commissioners should be receiving, I believe, today, maybe, from Aaron, a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we went over. I want to thank all of you for bringing forward names, um, for people to come. We had a great turnout. Um, the sheriff and Deputy Boyd did a really good job of, um, presenting information, and so we're in the information gathering stage now. People are, have been invited, people on that committee have been invited to, you know, think about the information presented and get questions back, and then we meet again, uh, next week to kind of follow up on that, so, thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly?
The, um, the mayor and, uh, Councilmember Kylie and myself will be meeting at noon today to hopefully determine, we interviewed the two applicant, the two finalist applicants and, for metro management, and I'm guessing today we'll make a decision as to who to, who to recommend to the metro management council, and then I believe, I don't know whether it comes back here or not, it may not. But, uh, either way, we're close to getting that job filled.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Additional reports? Is there any new business? Commissioner Bart?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, sorry I didn't bring this up when we had, uh, the highway department here, but, uh, it was in the news last night that the bridge, uh, south of Hartford at two sixty-third Avenue was heavily damaged, uh, by a oversized, uh, overheight vehicle. And with that bridge being closed, that's really a significant closure, uh, to cut off Hartford from, you know, area to the south there, and I'd like to find out, uh, what the prognosis is on getting that back operative and stuff. On KSFY, they said it was a, a million and a half or more dollar pro- problem, and, uh, uh, that's the, the main bridge on the west side of Hartford that goes south, and, uh...
I was there right after that happened. I couldn't figure out what was going on. There was a lot of, uh, sheriffs, or highway patrols and, and cameras, and there was a lot of stuff going on. It's like, what happened?
Let's find out. Thank you.
Any other new business? Any old business? I'd look for a motion for executive section for contract negotiations.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We adjourn.